Good evening. Welcome to our special council meeting. I'm Eric Bergeron, Acting Mayor of the City of Cornwall for today, and I'll be chairing the meeting. Madam Clerk?
I'm going to go through roll call. So Acting Mayor Eric Bergeron is here.
Present.
Councillors Glenn Grant.
Present.
Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Councillors Karine Nibar.
Present.
Maurice Dupell.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
And Councillor Liam McDonald.
Present.
All present, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqusasne. I'd like to move to the adoption of the agenda, please. Councillor Dupell? Is there a seconder? Councillor McIntosh? Any discussion, changes? No, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Carried. Thank you. Any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, we'll move past Committee of the Whole, a motion to move to the Committee of Whole. Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Grant. Any discussion? No. Call the vote. Carried. Thank you. Resolutions and reports? I'd like to read this myself if I can. Number one, proclamation acknowledgement of support to the Indigenous communities. Action recommended. That council acknowledged the injustice to the Indigenous people in our national past and present, and the recent discoveries of unmarked graves of children at residential schools. And that orange flags will be flown in our community to support the Indigenous communities and our neighbors in Aqusasne. A mover, Councillor Bennett? Seconder, Councillor Towndale? Any discussion? Councillor Gardner?
Yeah, I supported this proclamation acknowledgement as I have a brother who's married to a wonderful Indigenous lady, whose mother and two brothers were sent to residential schools, and I can only imagine the scars left. They were left with, because of that. And I've been a little reluctant to ask them about it. I, and I just need to explain that they were part of the Wahaniipate tribe in Sudbury, Caprio area in northern Ontario. And I'm supporting this because of what they went through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'm very happy to see this on the agenda. I'm glad we're taking some time to recognize what our entire Indigenous population across our country and really the world is suffering with. And we need to put some actions behind our words. And so I'm happy to see this, I'm happy to see the flags. But I also want to follow up. I know that former Mayor Clama had mentioned in previous meetings that there were, there was potentially some sensitivity training for our council in the works in preparation of our major partnership on the Portlandes. And I want to see where we're at with that. Is that being planned? If not, how can we get moving on that? I think this is more relevant than ever. We need to have this done as soon as possible. We will never be able to understand, but we need to do our best to support. And that's just one little step that we can do as a council.
Thank you. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So a very good question, thank you. Mayor Bernadette Clama and I were working on that just prior to her departure from the organization. And we were planning something potentially this summer, as we anticipated things would open up a little bit, and it might be better to do it. And we want to try and do it in person if we can. So all of this to say that I've had multiple discussions with a potential provider to provide that training. And we'll come back, and I'll work with the incoming mayor on that subject matter. And I think that we will have that initiated certainly within the next couple of months. And we anticipated three phases of the training. So there'd be an initial phase of training that would be done potentially jointly with Aqusasne. There might be something that is done enclosed, and there might also be something that is done with the entire community so the community can attend. So that would be the final component likely later this year. But if that is the case, then I envision a venue that might allow, or maybe in September if we do it outside, a venue that might allow more people to be able to participate. And so that's part of the planning that we've been in right now.
That's a lovely plan. I think as much as we can include our community as possible is ideal. I know that, you know, we have some work to do, but we all collectively as a community have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McIntosh?
With respect to the, through Eric to CEO, with respect to the lowering of flag, are we, are there any guidelines given to us by maybe the federal government? How long the flag stays down or such? It seems to be no criteria.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, thank you for the question. I don't believe that we have any guidance right now on how long to have flags lowered. I believe that it's at an indefinite date currently. And so I think we want to monitor what is appropriate and what we'll be right to follow. So at this point in time, I don't have a date that we would anticipate raising the flag, and I don't anticipate that we would raise the flag ahead of the federal government providing direction on that either.
Thank you. Councillor Hollingsworth? Speak loudly. There you go, yeah.
Just press enough buttons, they eventually rock. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. First of all, anything we can do to support our Indigenous neighbors across the river and Indigenous communities across the country, I'm in full support of. Just one question, and on a personal note, the news with regards to these unmarked graves, it is disturbing to me and unsettling. It's regrettable that our history has this black mark. All we can do is try to move forward to support, as I said, our friends and neighbors throughout the country. One question, do we have a flag policy in general with regards to this type of issue but any of these types of things that crop up? I know the feds may have a rule of thumb, but do we have anything in the city that we kind of use as a guideline?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, we do have a flag policy. And we are able to lower the flag based on events of national significance in line with the federal government. I can circulate that flag policy to council if they'd like to have a copy of it. I would like to maybe also mention, we have ordered orange flags. I think it's mentioned in the proclamation, but we have ordered orange flags. And we are aiming to have an orange flag flown at the traffic circle as well once it arrives. So we're hoping to have that shortly.
Fair enough. Speaking for myself as one councillor, I would like to just kind of get a copy of that policy. I don't know if my colleagues are interested, but just for future reference point, thank you, Madam CEO, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Welcome. Any other comments? Councillor Towndale?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I just want to echo the comments by my colleagues about this, our national shame and everything that has taken place in Canada's history. And I'm glad, in one sense, that finally we're having the discussions that need to be had, and we're recognizing the trauma that was caused by the residential school programs and policy in general. But on that note, I want to, I want to thank yourself, the CEO, and Councillor Bennett for remedying the issue with our own flag not being lowered at the traffic circle on July 1st, and for the statement you put out last week in support of Aqusasne and Indigenous peoples across the country.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This proclamation is probably overdue. And I appreciate the work that went into this on your behalf and on our CEO's behalf. It probably came eight or nine days too late, in fairness. You know, I look around and I know all of us have done something privately to show our support. But I failed to recognize the significance of the city making a statement, and I missed that opportunity, and I do apologize to our neighbors for that. I have had email conversations with Grand Chief Abram Benedict and expressed those concerns on my behalf. And I'm convinced that the open communication that we've had, there's no, for lack of a better term, hard feelings. I think they realize we made a mistake, I think we realize we made a mistake. And I'm glad to see that we're doing this to correct that mistake. And I'm afraid that there will be more of these discoveries made going forward, so I think we all need to be particularly aware of what our neighbors are going through. And as another councillor just mentioned a while ago, it may not be easy for us to understand, but we can absolutely support and be there for our friends and neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I think the Aqusasne community appreciate the efforts that yourself and Councillor Bennett and the CEO did to react to the misstep in our recognizing this. But what I'm, I'm a good, strong Catholic, and what is bothering me more than anything is that we haven't heard from the Pope. And I know this is out of our realm, but I think it's important that we take a stand with the Catholic Church, we've done it in different other areas, to insist that they, we get a formal apology from, or the Indigenous people get a formal apology from the Catholic Church and the Pope himself. So that's, I don't know if we can do anything to put something to our diocese and forward that along, but I think that's an important step in the reconciliation process. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion at our council meeting would probably be in order. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. And we've had a few references to history here and the historical record, but I just want to underline the fact that obviously this isn't a matter of history, this is a matter of the here and now, because until this situation is corrected, and it's a very longstanding, deeply entrenched situation of discrimination and social injustice, until that's corrected, we are continuing to perpetuate what our forefathers did. We are benefiting from the structures that were put in place, and it is very incumbent on us to change them. And I second Councillor Hebert's call for action. And the actual education of all public servants isn't just something that we should do here because we're involved in the Portlandes. It was enjoined in the 94 recommendations following the Truth and Reconciliation Report, Article 57, all public servants have to get educated. And that was issued six years ago. So the faster we can do that, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. I would acknowledge that we are all public servants, so I would share that thought. I just wanted to add, if there's no other comments from council, I don't see any. There is no handbook when you become acting mayor, and we'll let everyone know that. What I did do is I called the Grand Chief on Monday and apologized in person on our behalf, on behalf of this council. And his words to me were very powerful, very wise, as would be expected. And we spoke of the, how loud our silence was. And it's very powerful to me. And so I brought this motion forward, or I brought this resolution forward today because I think it's really important. I think when you take this seat, whoever becomes the mayor tonight, however this evening proceeds, you do speak on behalf of a city. And that matters. So I'll call the vote on this motion. All in favor? Next, Madam Clerk?
I believe you wanted to read this one as well, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay. So item number two, resolution appointment of a presiding officer. Whereas on June, read the whole of it? Yes? Whereas on June 28, 2021, council decided to appoint the current members of council to fill the vacancy of the mayor's position. And whereas the appointment of the mayor will be made at its special council meeting of Thursday, July 8, 2021. Whereas the purpose of the appointment of the mayor, the presiding officer shall be the city clerk. Now therefore, be it resolved that Manon Leveig, city clerk, shall be appointed to the presiding officer of the special council meeting of July 8, 2021. Councillor Bennett will make the motion. Councillor Dupell will second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor. It is carried. Now I go back.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So the procedure for electing or appointing the mayor has been outlined in the report. So the first thing that I would like to know is if there are any calls for nominations. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I nominate Glenn Grant.
Is there a seconder? Councillor McIntosh? Councillor Grant, would you accept the responsibilities of becoming mayor of the City of Cornwall?
Yes, I will.
Are there any other nominations?
Madam Clerk?
Councillor Bergeron?
I'd like to nominate Councillor Justin Towndale.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Hollingsworth? Would you accept the responsibilities, Councillor Towndale, of becoming the next mayor?
Yes, I would.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Thank you. So both nominations have been duly moved and seconded. We would like at this point to offer Councillor Glenn Grant and Councillor Justin Towndale to say a few words and to address council, and tell us your thoughts and what you're looking forward to.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Councillor McDonald and Councillor McIntosh for the nomination. Just for a point of interest, last, the last term of council, at the start of the last election, I was planning on running for mayor. I went to see Bernadette and asked her if she was interested in running, and she said definitely she was. And at that time, I decided not to, and because, in my opinion, there wasn't anybody who was going to beat Bernadette in the city. And so I, instead, I told her that I would support her for mayor, and I decided to run for city council. So I've been interested in the mayor's position, and it all depended who was seeking that office. Bernadette's been a very good mayor in the, in the two and a half years she's been in the position. And she's, she's taught me things, and same as every other mayor has taught me, different pros and cons about the office. So I'm, I believe that with the support of my fellow councillors, we can move the agenda forward, we can move the strategic plan. We basically, Bernadette paved that road, and now we have to continue that road and keep paving it. And I think this council is a strong council, and with their assistance, I can help move that, our city forward. And especially in looking at, in the last week or so, we talk about good relationships, and sometimes we just do the talking. I know COVID got in the way, but we have to continue improving our relationships, not only with the counties, but with the Moa Council of Aqusasne as well. So I'm, I had a good conversation with the chief the other day, and Abram and I had a good, long conversation, and we are together going to work forward, work together to move the city forward. So I'd appreciate the support of my fellow councillors and help, help you move this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Grant. Councillor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If it's all right, I'll stand. I hope my microphone still picks me up, but I'm used to standing at council meetings. It's strange for me to be amongst you again in person, I've been doing Zoom for over a year now, and it's nice to be back, I'm glad things are moving forward. It's been an interesting year, that goes without saying. And I don't think it's possible to truly replace Bernadette by any means, nor would I try. I think it's a question of fulfilling the role that she left behind. And I'm not saying she left it in a negative connotation, she's going to bigger and better things, and she's going to represent not only us, but the entire country at the federal level, which is fantastic. The elephant in the room, obviously, is my code of conduct violation. And for that, I have to acknowledge it. I'm human, and the best thing I can do is learn from my mistakes and accept full responsibility for what I did, because I do. One thing that the military tells you to do is accept full responsibility for your actions, they drill it into you from day one. The punishment is always more severe if you try to not accept responsibility for your actions. And I do accept full responsibility to the CEO, I apologize. And I'm not doing that tonight just to get your support. It's the first meeting in person where I have the opportunity to do that. Could have done it Monday. On the note of the military, I know a question has come up about my future commitments. I am part of the reserves, I have no future long-term commitments. That's not to say I've left my service, I am still a reservist with the local unit, but my base requirements are as little as one weekend a month, or correction, one weekday a month. But usually you try for a couple weeknights a month and a weekend a month if possible. But I've completed my training, so there's no further requirement for me to leave for extended periods of time. I think Councillor Grant is right, it's Bernadette's path. She paved it, she carried the torch, and now the torch is being handed off to one of us. And if I am successful and I become the mayor in the next couple months, I'm not seeking to rewrite the book by any means. We're on a path that we set early on in the term with our strategic plan that Bernadette set, and that's, if it's me, that's the intent I intend to follow. Bernadette and I share common beliefs, aside from the political spectrum. Partnerships are important, Councillor Grant touched on that, he's right. We have to have strong partnerships with Aqusasne, with the communities next to us, South Glengarry, South Stormont, and the counties as a whole. In the past seven years, almost eight years now that I've been on council, I've had very productive and fruitful relationships, both professionally and personally with these groups. And that's something I would definitely carry forward. I always feel that in order for us to be successful, we have to be successful as a whole. We're becoming a region more and more, and we can't just be successful on our own, we have to be successful with our partners next door, and that's important. My goal since being elected has been to represent the residents of Cornwall, whether they vote, whether they don't vote, whether they're engaged to vote, whether they're not. I've hoped that over the last seven years, I've done that to the best of my ability. I'm not perfect, I don't pretend to be. And I'm just hoping to continue along that role, to represent the citizens of the city to the best of my ability. And my goal has always, always been the success of the city. I want to see the city prosper. I don't think that's a secret, I think we all do. I'm not saying that like I'm the, I have the monopoly on it by any means, but that's something that's near and dear to me, especially since I moved home in 2014. If I am elected mayor by yourselves and I become the chair of meetings, I can promise you that debate will be respectful, all opinions will be heard. We may not always agree, but we have to listen to each other. That's the point of debate, and we're always going to have differing viewpoints. I think a council that would pass things unanimously every single time would not be an effective government. There are exceptions, the last motion obviously deserves unanimous support, and it had it. So I just hope you will consider that tonight. Regardless, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councillor Towndale. So as it stands, we have two councillors nominated, and they are not permitted to vote, which leaves us down to eight voting members. We need five votes in favor to appoint the next mayor. This shall be a recorded vote, so I'm going to go around the table.
Point of order, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Is the mover and seconder of the nominations not allowed to speak? Sorry, I'm reading the, reading the, what's in our agenda. I understood it, that the mover and seconder could speak, maybe I have misread that.
We could allow for that.
I think traditionally, we've always allowed the mover and the seconder to speak to motions, so I do not see why we would differentiate from that.
Councillor Bergeron?
Yes?
Or Acting Mayor Bergeron? Not sure which to use at this time.
Councillor Bergeron is fine, thank you. Look, I just want to speak, I nominated Councillor Towndale, but I also voted in favor of a by-election. I really feel that that was the route we should have taken. Elections matter, I think all of us around this table understand that. You know, we are here, some of us, because of very few votes. Councillor Hollingsworth, we'd be the first to acknowledge, you know, that that's just reality. The, never, you know, once we're elected, we are all equals, there is no math behind our votes. We all speak and we all vote equally. And I, I believe in that. But that's not what we're doing here today. Today, we're electing a mayor. And that matters. And in the last election, Councillor Towndale received more votes than anybody around this And to me, that's really important. It's why I would have selected a by-election first, it's why I'm nominating Councillor Towndale. Doesn't matter if I agree with him, doesn't matter if I disagree with him. The role of mayor is selected by the people of Cornwall. So as I see it, ultimately, if Councillor Towndale is willing to take the job, then that is my vote. Otherwise, it would have moved to Councillor McDonald, who finished second in the election. So that's really all that I wanted to say. I'm not going to speak on behalf of Councillor Towndale, he did that himself. But that is why I am making the nomination. Thank you.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
I'm not sure who to thank, so I guess I'll thank the clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Acting Mayor, whomever I'm officially supposed to acknowledge here. I nominated, or I seconded Councillor Bergeron's motion because I thought it was important that we actually have a number of candidates. If I had it my way, I'd have three or four candidates, and quite frankly, there were a number of councillors that I contacted to try to lobby them to pursue it, but for whatever reason, they chose not to, and so be it. reason, they chose not to, and so be it. At the last meeting, I, I didn't support the election process, because I didn't want to spend the money. I thought, for the sake of a year, it would be an awful lot of money, and so be it. I did, however, support the motion to go to an at-large kind of nomination, because I honestly believe, I don't know if the word is unfair, I mean, municipal act says we're allowed to do this, and this is not my first one. I did one back in, I don't know, 95 or 96, when Mayor Ron Martell resigned, and I felt just as uncomfortable then as I do right now. It's like we're sort of circumventing the election process, which democracies aren't supposed to work that way, and I know we're allowed to make hard decisions and all that kind of stuff, but this isn't really about whether we put a sewer in or not, it's about picking who's going to basically be our, our representative. I think both candidates, I'm sure, will do an excellent job of representing the city. They'll champion the city to the best of their ability, I've no doubt about that. Each candidate, or each member who's been nominated, has some things that I don't completely subscribe to. I could probably, and I'm sure that I do some things that they don't subscribe to either, so quite frankly, I'm not really that comfortable with the either or, because there's good and bad, everybody has that. But I think councillor Bergeron makes a compelling argument, that if in doubt, if you don't know what to do, and quite frankly, that's kind of how I have felt for the last two weeks, if you don't know what to do, the easiest and most practical solution is go back to what the public has decided. And while voting for councillor versus mayor is a different animal, I would agree with that, the public currently, as it stands, and the numbers are there for us to review, have suggested that councillor Towndale is their preferred option, at least based on the last election. We can debate at not great length about which member would be better, and I think, quite frankly, either one, I'm sure, will, as I said, do an excellent job, but having kind of, finding myself grinding through the process, trying to figure out what the right path is, I think, when it gets right down to crunch time, the easiest, most defendable position is to pick the member with the most votes, which is why I seconded councillor Bergeron's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So we will afford the same opportunity to our other two movers and seconders?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm very proud to nominate councillor Grant, and I encourage my peers to support his bid for the mayoralty, and I do so after having considered, obviously, everybody else around the table too, because what we have here is a table of ten leaders, there's no question. We all have a following, or we wouldn't be sitting here. But I think, at a time like this, you can't just consider the qualities of a person, even though that is extremely important. You have to consider the times in which we are living and acting, because leadership is essentially a response to a situation. And the situation I see is this: we're three years in on a four-year mandate, we've got 15 months to go, we have an absolutely rock-solid, clear agenda that we worked on, we hammered out together, and I do believe that the person who is most committed and able to lead us through to the completion of all the objectives in our strategic plan is councillor Grant, and I think so for these reasons. Glenn is a great communicator. When you speak to him, and you listen to him, you know exactly what he's thinking. He's plain-spoken, though sometimes you could consider that a put-down. In a politician, it's probably the best thing you can say about them. When they open their mouths and speak, you know what they meant, because they mean what they say, and Glenn Grant is, has always been like that, sometimes to the point of disagreement and debate, but I have never known him to be disrespectful in disagreement or in debate. And even when he's asking administration questions, as all of us do at different times, I have never heard a note of challenge in his voice. Glenn Grant is a team player, and I think that he is well-qualified to lead us, single-mindedly, along the completion of our strategic plan. I'd also like to say that Glenn follows through on what he decides is the best thing to do. When we're debating, he's able to change his mind, but when he articulates his position, he holds to it, and he votes that way, and you can trust that. A third point: Glenn is responsive. I know we, all of us, spend time apologizing for the calls we haven't returned, but I'll tell you that if Glenn's at home, he picks up the phone, and if he was not home and missed it, he calls you back. That's not, that's no small thing, and it's actually, I'm sorry to say, somewhat rare. And Glenn not only returns calls, Glenn initiates calls. I have known him to call, me at least, and I'm sure others as well, because we talk about these things, when he's looking for an idea, or the best way to, to get somewhere, or to see if we're on side with him, he'll call and discuss, and he tries to find out what the opposite point of view is, and you respect that, because somebody who's chosen the path, it's always good to know that they rejected the alternate one after thinking about it. And finally, I have to say that Glenn is transparent and honest. Over three terms, I have not seen Glenn act according to any hidden agenda, or advance a course of action that's contrary to his clearly articulated views. No surprises and no hidden agendas with Glenn Grant. We have a strategic plan, we hammered out together. Glenn has demonstrated himself during these three years, to this point, to be absolutely with the program, to be single-mindedly with that program, and willing to work within its parameters. This position for Glenn is not a stepping stone to another position. This is a commitment on his part to do the very best he can do to keep us going in the same direction, with his support and leadership, that our former mayor brought us to date with her support and leadership. So, I, I suggest, I plead with all of you to support Glenn's bid for this position. And I also want to say, I, I'm fully gratified when I heard Glenn, not today, here today, but on a previous occasion, talk about the overtures that he had made with Grand Chief Abram Benedict, because we all know that, even though being a councillor is really all about sewers and sidewalks, there's a world out there beyond the sewers and sidewalks, and I think Glenn has made a wonderful preparatory step. He hasn't been on the Portland Committee, so he has been out of that loop, but he has approached the grand chief, and he has pledged himself to do what Mary Simon, our new governor-general, has done, and that is to be a bridge. And here in this town, where we're right beside this bridge, I think that if we have somebody who has made this pledge, and I'm sure we'd all do it too, but Glenn went out and approached the grand chief to clear up a misunderstanding, and to make sure that his assurance of cooperation was a matter of record between the two men, and now it's a matter of public record too, after what he said. So, I, I please, I recommend councillor Glenn Grant to you. I think he will serve us well for the next 15 months, and bring us quite a bit further along the way in our strategic plan. No diversions, no distractions, just sewers and sidewalks, and whatever else comes up, but we'll hold the course and stay focused. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McIntosh?
Oh, you want me to follow that? Well, I'm very comfortable with this system of replacing Bernadette. The city has used it twice, I believe, in the last 70 years, and each time, they picked among their own, and the results were pretty good. I want to commend councillor/ Lieutenant Towndale for acknowledging maybe a mistake in the past, and offering an apology. It, I appreciate your military analogy, it's a good one. I would say if you saved that speech for 2022, you could see a lot of success at the polls. I've known Glenn Grant longer than anybody around this table or in this room. We go back when we were 15-year-olds, playing on a back-to-back EASA championship basketball teams. We've remained friends ever since. I know him well. We're even related through marriage, although his wife Sylvie probably denied that. There was an article, op editorial, article in the Standard for Elder last Saturday, and it made some, some allegations that I just don't agree with, in regards to diversity. And I ask you this question: would somebody who doesn't believe in diversity become the campaign manager for the first openly gay MP in Stormont-Dundas, South Glengarry? Would somebody who didn't believe in diversity support and campaign for the first female mayor of this city, first female black mayor in Ontario, perhaps Canada, we're not sure of that? Would somebody who didn't believe in diversity support the first female police chief who's gay? Glenn's chair of the police board, and he gave Shauna Spowright his full support, and I know he's going to give her his support as she goes on into the career as a police chief. There was a retraction, apparently, that was going to happen, take place, I'm told, from regards to that op editorial piece, and apparently hasn't appeared yet. I, I found the, the timing of that article very interesting, the Saturday for this vote, not a lot of time to respond to it. As I said, Glenn's got a lot of experience. I think he'd make a good mayor for the next 17 months. As councillor McDonald explained, pointed out, he's not seeking office after the end of the next year. He's stepping down, leaving politics, and I have no problem supporting my good friend, Glenn Grant.
It would appear that it's time to take the vote. So I'm going to call you by name, and each councillor will tell, will, will indicate which councillor they are voting for to become our next mayor. Councillor Claude McIntosh?
Glenn Grant.
Councillor Eric Bergeron?
Justin Towndale.
Councillor Sid Gardner?
Glenn Grant.
Councillor Dean Hollingsworth?
Councillor Towndale.
Councillor Karine Nibar?
Councillor Glenn Grant.
Councillor Maudre Stupel?
Councillor Glenn Grant.
Councillor Todd Bennett?
Councillor Glenn Grant.
And councillor McDonald?
Councillor Glenn Grant.
Councillor Glenn Grant has received five votes, and councillor Towndale, three votes. Therefore, councillor Glenn Grant, you are our next mayor. Congratulations.
Well, I used to hear, hear other politicians talk about a humbling experience, and it truly is. I'm not much of a crier, but some things kind of get to you, and, and I want to thank you for, for this honor, and I promise that I will always be accessible, and, and one thing I know, that it's, the job is, is easy, because we've got such a darn good administration, and they have, they have helped me as a city councillor on the terms that I've been there, and, and I reach out to them, and they're always open and honest, and give me the best advice that I can have, because I don't know a lot about sewers and all those other things, and they, they give me that information. So, I promise that I'll be available to anybody that wants me to, to hear from them, and I'll be there to, to work as hard as I can for this city, and I know it's 18 months, or whatever the term is, 15 months, but I'll, you know that 100% is going to be there the whole time I'm there, so thank you very much, I truly appreciate it, and, and I hope administration keeps working as hard as they, they have in the past, so thank you.
So before I hand it back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor, I just want to correct my vote. It was six to two.
Is that what you were going to say?
No, I wasn't. I just wanted a couple of observations. I want to thank Todd and yourself, Eric, for filling in under some unusual circumstances that you didn't, weren't able to put your feet up and just coast. You had some heavy-duty stuff dumped on your shoulders, and you did a darn good job, okay? I appreciate that. I think we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
My next question would be, does Eric's term as acting mayor end right now, or does it wait till Glenn's sworn in?
I was going to remind councillor Grant, after congratulating him, that technically, I am acting mayor until Monday, although you're welcome to take over the duties effective immediately. We can have a conversation about that if you like, but we will be formally naming you as mayor at the meeting on Monday, so I will open the meeting on Monday, and then you'll take over as chair. Congratulations.
Thank you. You're doing a wonderful job, Eric, so.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, we will be swearing in our new mayor on Monday. You will take your oath of office. You will preside, councillor, Mr. Acting Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting, but you continue to be acting mayor in case our new mayor is not available for some of the activities going on for the month. So you're not quite done yet.
Fair enough. Thank you for the clarification. And so we've ended this meeting. Congratulations again to councillor Grant, elected mayor Grant, mayor-elect Grant?
Select.
Mayor-select Grant. And the next item is adjournment, so a motion to adjourn. Councillor Hollingsworth, councillor Bennett, all in favor? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.